Please cut them off. We're gonna start our agenda night with a call order. We have invocation Pastor Mike McCauley. Is he? Okay, well there you are, sir. We're gonna do you and then after him, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a scout. So Zach Revels, you're in here and we'll call you up after Pastor gets through.
Thank you for doing this, sir.
Anyone who wants to please stand.
Good evening, gentlemen. It is an honor to be here with you tonight. I want to remind you that in the Book of Joshua, in the first chapter, Moses is dead. God has called Joshua to take his place. And he tells him how to lead this entire nation to prosperity. And here's what it says, "Only be thou strong and very courageous, that thou mayest observe to do according to all the law, which Moses my servant commanded thee. Turn not from it to the right hand or to the left, that thou mayest prosper whithersoever thou goest." Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity of serving. And, Lord, we thank you for all of these good men that serve you. I pray that you give them wisdom. I pray that you lead them. I pray that you instruct them. I pray that you protect them. Be with us, Lord, in this business meeting tonight and whatever is done. And, Lord, I pray that all that we do, you'll be pleased with it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thanks Pastor McCauley. And thanks for all the church does in our community.
Thank you.
All right. Zach, where you at? Zach? Oh, there's that young man right there. Come on up here and show us how to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Come right up here to the front. And there's your flag right there. What do we do?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible and in the written and in the聖神.
Now Zach's with troop 258 and I'll have to give Zach some credit. He's pretty brave to come up by himself. I don't know where the rest of your troop members are, but you get extra credit for coming by yourself, okay? Anything you'd like to say? All right. With that, we'll have the roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Paul.
President.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
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 We're all here. Next, you have the approval of the minutes from March 21, 2017, and April 4, 2017.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have presentations. Our first one is a resolution expressing appreciation for service rendered by Keith Smith as an employee of the city for more than thirty years. So I'm gonna read this Keith and then we're gonna get you to come up here. And I've probably known Keith about all these thirty years and I really hate to read this. As a matter of fact, I wish I could figure out how to rescind it. And the only thing I can say is, in government, the good thing about government is when people like Keith retire, they stay gone about six months and they come back as consultants. So there's always a chance, Keith, that you can come back. So this is Resolution 2017-41, expressing appreciation for service rendered by Keith Smith as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty years. Keith retires on July 1, 2017, as a safety coordinator with the Human Resources Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than thirty years of service. Keith began his career on January 19, 1987, as a laborer one in the Public Works Department. On February 3, 1998, he was promoted to materials control worker in the public works. On January 3, 1989, Keith was promoted to equipment operator two in the public works. On February 6, 1991, Keith was promoted to materials controller with the public works. On September 3, 1997, Keith was promoted to construction inspector with the engineering department. On July 1, 2015, Keith was promoted to safety coordinator with the Human Resources Department, where he has served until his retirement. Whereas Keith has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro are expressing to Keith their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, it be resolved by the mayor, the city council, the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express to Keith our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. We offer Keith our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated in the official minutes. The city of Goldsboro shall be in full force and effect from and after this the 26th day of June 2000. All for this for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All the favor, raise your right hand. All right, come on up Keith, not a fun part.
There she is.
You gotta get a laugh.
Okay.
You got a smile.
You're doing good.
Yeah, Mayor, before you let him get away, I would like Pam to come up and just say something nice about Keith.
Well Pam will talk first.
You can talk.
That's fine.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Thanks, sir.
I would just like to say that Keith came to Chide two years ago. He gave ground running in Human Resources, having come from the engineering department. He made sure all of our departments were in compliance with safety. He's been on a lot of vehicle accident calls, also responding to our safety committee meetings, and he's definitely been a master and we're definitely going to get him.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank y'all for allowing me to work here for thirty years. I appreciate it.
Thanks Keith, for everything you did. Good job. Okay, still under presentations, we have the Gold Star Award and it's Human Resources. So Pam, is that you?
Evening, evening. We have several awards to present tonight. We have several individuals who are being recognized tonight for going above and beyond the call of duty, whether it's for customer service, their professional duties, or just helping out with our citizens. And I'm going to ask the nominated persons if they would come up and if you would just read the statements that warranted these persons receiving the Gold Star Award. So first, I'm gonna call Captain Thomas Unruh.
Just Archibald.
How are you? Good evening, sir. Good, how are you? Good, what people? On April 1, firefighter Brit, firefighter with Goldsboro for many years, went above and beyond the call of duty after a Saturday long day of chores. Everybody knows firefighters work hard on Saturday. You see us out doing yards, grass, trucks. Decided upon himself to do what he could to beautify the fire department. He spent over eight hours after his day of work sanding and painting our traffic barrier poles, the yellow poles out front, in front and back of the fire station, right by himself. Didn't ask for help. He had no motivation to do it. Not trying to get promoted, not in any way trying to get an advancement. He done it because it needed to be done. And I thank you to a lot of pride, a lot of effort to do that. So I just want to thank you for doing that and I appreciate you guys recognizing that.
All right. Come on in.
He's a good guy. He's a good guy.
Appreciate it.
Can you get a picture?
Yeah.
Well, I've known him since we were just this high. We used to work together. And now we're both wearing glasses and still working.
And he's still working.
That's the confidence.
I do know you better.
Tell them I used to know how to work.
Still working.
Randy, where are you at?
No, you're not. You didn't even do it.
Yeah, I'm holding it.
You got a chit.
Yeah, let me hold a chit.
Maybe you give it what maybe you want.
You're weird.
We'll talk next Saturday, sir.
Okay.
The thing is, you gotta buy everybody home. You understand? Now you smile back there, I don't worry about her. That's the official city camera right there.
Next, we'll have Captain Julian Whitten.
All right. All right. Um, let me read my little... All right, so firefighter Coley, which is behind me, has been on my crew for a little while this year. Back in April, we went on EMS call down on Slocum Street. And while we were there, the lady called saying she was needing some medical assistance. And what actually happened was the lady had been sitting in a chair for three days. And she has amputee, missing one leg, had no help, family didn't live in town. So what we did was, when we got in there, she had defecated on herself and on the chair that she'd been sitting in for three days. So we assisted her getting up, getting her to the bathroom, making sure she got clean. And firefighter Coley took it upon himself to clean the lady's chair and the floor, mopped it up, made the house look as clean as it could. So he went above and beyond because the rest of us were ready to leave, to be honest with you. So I put him in for the award and I appreciate y'all recognizing him. I just believe in customer service is what he did and he went above on that, so.
Good deal.
Very good.
All right, we'll get one of y'all. If you'll smile, we'll let you stay in ours. All right, look, man, you don't have to do this right. You gotta be there. I could have it happen.
His customer service.
Above and beyond.
I'm gonna ask Laura to come along so that she can stand here with me.
The dynamic duo.
Something like that, right? Good evening, Mayor and Council. I nominated Laura because I felt like she did an outstanding job in representing not only the city manager's office, but also the city of Goldsboro at the Wings Over Wayne Air Show. Laura met numerous times with county staff and base officials to ensure our part in the air show was a success. She worked countless hours leading up to and during the air show, providing excellent customer service. She ensured our sponsorship tent was set up. She was greeting guests and making sure the chalet was stocked with snacks and water and made sure that all of our items promoting the city of Goldsboro was available. We received several positive comments, including this one from the base. I want to personally thank you for everything the city of Goldsboro did for my staff. I especially thank you for your generosity to the troops who worked so hard. You welcomed them with open arms. I truly enjoyed working with you to make this weekend a memorable experience. You made my job easy. Laura supports me on a daily basis, so if I get a little choked up, I'm sorry, but she did an outstanding job representing the city.
Well, now I get to talk. Well, I do work daily if I'm here. Some will say apparently that I'm not here enough, but if I am here, and I will tell you, Laura especially, because anybody that knows me, I'll come in with like a five-page letter and say, Laura, will you type this? I need it in an hour. And it's pretty chicken scratch. But she's got a system now and she figures me out. And we, but her and Melissa do an awesome job. They're a great team and we'd be lost without both of you and we really appreciate what y'all do. And the only thing you did wrong on this day is about fifteen degrees too hot.
I agree. Next time, you'll try to order the weather.
There you go. You gotta put that down and you gotta smile. Are you looking? Act like Bob does. Act like Randy Bob again.
And I'm just...
Are you smiling? I don't see it. I might be. All right, thank you, Laura. You wanna say anything?
No.
You sure?
Come on, Laura.
And for our last individual award, I'm gonna ask Ashwin if she would come up.
And name if you would come up as well. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So, the weekly nap to Wings Over Wayne Air Show, it was definitely crunch time for travel and tourism. And that's why I wanted to recommend Lynn Granton for the Golden Star Award because of her efforts. The director, deputy director relied heavily on our office for a lot of last minute changes for marketing and performer schedules. And I was really in a bind to find a lot of help for coverage for the sponsorship tent and just getting everything set up and for coverage for a lot of different aspects of the air show. But Lynn was scheduled to be off the Friday before air show to go to a wedding that weekend. Instead, she went above and beyond with the job we called for. And I don't even remember asking her to come and help. She just knew there was a need. And without hesitation, she rearranged her travel plans and came to work on her day off to make sure that the tent represented the city well in front of one of the biggest audiences that Goldsboro has. So, and although she was supposed to leave for a friend's wedding on Friday, she decided to stay in town to be on call for Saturday morning in case extra hands on deck were needed. I could go on and on and on about how much she helped. She even helped secure transportation with a truck to get everything. She came into my office, she loaded everything up, she went on base, she unloaded everything. She was there from the time we needed to be there for the tent till the job was done until the end of the day. And then she stayed in town that Saturday morning to make sure we, if anything else is needed, she was there. So anyways, she went the extra two miles and that's why she deserves this, so.
Good deal. Y'all can go first. Yeah, y'all need to move to the official tower. Now, hold on, I gotta smile. That's bad because you can see yourself.
Oh, you're talking.
All right, you try it one more time. See, I like that. One more sleep. All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that a lot.
We had some outstanding employees this month, so now I'm going to call the individuals for our group awards. Captain Davis, if you would come up. And I'm gonna give you the certificates for your nominees.
You're not calling them up?
Yes. Mr. Allen, Mr. Polak, and Mrs. Stewart.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Um, I nominated the three individuals that are coming up for a job well done. They've consistently exercised professionalism, integrity, and show what the city stands for. We've went on several EMS calls this year. We kinda talk about it amongst ourselves, but we've had some serious calls. And I'll just talk briefly about three of them. One of them was an infant child who we went to and unfortunately didn't make it. And that's difficult for anyone to deal with. Later on that same evening, we went to another unresponsive call with an elderly patient. And we were able to get that patient revived. And these three individuals took it upon themselves on their time off to go by and check on the family members of both the infant and the elderly. And that shows, you know, extremely, extremely professionalism, quite frankly. Then moving forth to another EMS call, it was with an elderly patient. We got her revived and she survived for about a week or so. And she eventually succumbed to her injuries, I guess you could say. And we followed up with the patient, with the family, and, you know, through that week. And when she passed, firefighter Polak took it upon himself to find out when the wake or the funeral was gonna be. And he went on behalf of all of us to show his, to show our condolences. And I think that that's big, you know, because when you're on shift, you know, you're expected to perform and we do. What you do on your time off is, you know, go on business, but they still choose to live by the city values, you know, on their time off, so.
Outstanding. Awesome.
All right, now y'all know the deal. Turn around. We're gonna have to squeeze in here a little bit. You gotta shit. Are you smiling? Oh, no.
Yes.
That's it?
No, that's not all.
I want my phone back.
Mr. Rowe, if you would come up with Mr. Lopez and Mr. Kenny.
Please.
Good evening. I've been here long enough to know how this goes, so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
These are part of my code enforcement team. This is my code enforcement, one of my code enforcement officers, Gaston Lopez. And this is a part-time record, Derrell McKenzie, that the city council allowed me to hire last year. And they've been doing a good job throughout the city. On May 25, 2017, at approximately 3:45 PM, Gaston Lopez and Derrell McKenzie were traveling on Canal Street when they noticed two males unloading a large motorcycle from a fifteen-foot-long U-Haul trailer on a small ramp. One of the males lost control of his side of the motorcycle, causing it to fall to the ground on top of him. Gaston and Derrell immediately exited the vehicle and helped move the motorcycle off the man. The throttle of the handlebar had actually punctured the man's foot and it was bleeding profusely. Gaston contacted the rescue squad who transported the man to the hospital. These gentlemen were out doing their normal duties. They was on the way to the transfer station to get rid of some bags that they had picked up. And they saw this and I think it was a great job to do something like that.
They got some family there? Do y'all want to bring the family in?
Right.
Well, y'all wanna get up in the picture? I'm gonna take your picture. Come on. Oh, come on, this one. Man, this is, we're family, son. We're family. Get up there.
On a bike.
I'm not gonna hold any of them either. I'm not gonna be mad at her either. Gaston, you're not smiling. Smile. Why not get in here then? Let me get right here to live. Let me tell y'all my Gaston story. So, one of Gaston's jobs is coal or forest. Oh, I got the small oil. Why don't you go and breathe that? No, I don't want it. We wanna get it now. Why are you taking pictures of my man, honey?
I'm using my camera.
So anyway, so, if there's ever any question about if we give tickets equally in this city, I just want you to know about two weeks ago, I went out to my illegally parked car and press this here. Anybody ticket, just believe that. That's all right. It's all fair, right? Look at your face. All right, that's all it is. All right, thank you so much. Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. Legner, if you would come up with your nominees. Mr. Brown, Mr. Kimbrough, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Weaver.
I wonder why those three was sitting there not doing anything now? I don't know. Last month, prior to the air show, we were asked by the Goldsboro Police Department if we could help map out and plan and also paint some auxiliary parking. And without missing a beat, these gentlemen jump up and did exactly what was needed done. I believe it took us, what, a day and a half? They spent an entire day and a half just out there measuring, marking, and painting extra parking spots just to ensure the ease for anybody coming out for the air show. And for that, that's why I nominated these four gentlemen.
All right. Another great job. Bill.
Thank you.
Donnie.
Thank you, sir.
Matthew. What? Chuck. Come on, Pat. Thank you for doing that. I just want to take one minute to tell you, the reason we do this award is these are all special people. We have a lot of really great employees at this city, where there are a lot of people who go above and beyond their everyday job. And they don't do it for the award. They do it because they're good people, they care about this community, and they care about the people in this community. So I do want to take a minute to thank them and thank all our staff, because everybody does try to make this city better. And I especially thank all y'all and I'm glad we were able to recognize you. And please take that back to your various departments, that we do appreciate what you do. And y'all are welcome to stay for the whole meeting. I mean, don't feel like you have to leave. Scott, next time, y'all gotta do like half of that. Do a little better. I thought my battery's gonna go dead. I think with that, Jimmy, I think we're ready to start item D under public hearing.
Item D, contiguous annexation request, Gala Spring Housing Associates LLC, northwest corner of Gala Best Road and Austin Boulevard, 5.3 acres. There's an attached annexation report. I'm not going to go through the report unless the council wants me to. I'll go through the memo. The city council, at that meeting on June 5, 2017, scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of the subject property. A public hearing notice was properly advertised stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting pursuant to GS 168-31. At the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed to be annexed, as well as residents of the municipality, shall be given an opportunity to be heard on proposed annexation. If council determines that the proposed annexation meets all the requirements of GS 168-31, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. The report that's attached indicates that this request meets all of the requirements. All city services can be provided to the property. The recommendation would be by motion, after the public hearing, adopt the attached ordinance annexing the Gala Spring Housing Associates LLC property effective June 30, 2017.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Jimmy? All right. If not, this is a public hearing for the continuous annexation request for Gala Spring Housing Associates LLC. Would anyone like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am. But you're speaking on this public hearing, ma'am.
Yes. Oh. Okay, no.
Yes, sir. Do you need his name and address? If you will, sir, give Melissa your name and address, please.
I'm just sitting out there looking at the banner up here. I don't think one of you can, maybe Mr. Dalton, I don't know, or Mr. Acock, can remember. In 1947, we had our 100th centennial celebration in Goldsboro. I was in the fourth grade. Anybody up here remember that? Well, the reason, one reason I brought this up, and also, by the way, I started out in the first grade, this was at Weem Street School when I was in the fourth grade, I walked downtown to the celebration. In the first grade through the third grade, I went to school at Seymour Johnson Homes. We were all in one room, three grades. And then from the third grade, fourth grade, Weem Street School, and then to the high school, where I graduated in 1956. But one reason I brought this up is it appears to me, and I've been around a long time, I'm seven... But one reason I brought this up is it appears to me, and I've been around a long time, I'm 78 years old, that we don't have much respect for the citizenry, especially for the people like me, the older, senior citizens.
Mr. Sutton, let me stop you a minute. I think you're wanting to speak under the public comment period time.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, just sit in the public comment. This is only to do with this one item.
What was the other?
For the annexation.
Well, I didn't realize that.
So, let us, let us finish this, and you'll get your turn in about two more times.
Well, I didn't, I didn't understand.
All right. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll be clear when we get to public comment.
If I'd have known that, I definitely wouldn't have come up here.
That's all right. You can come back when we get to public comment. Yeah, this is about the Gala Best annexation.
Oh, God.
All right, thank you.
I haven't been hearing these on.
That's okay. It's no problem. No problem. Does anybody want to speak about the Gala Best annexation? If not, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next.
Mayor, you did have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We gotta have a, yeah, we, we, we have a, a motion to approve. Or we need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those, everybody raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, Jim.
Item E is a non-contiguous annexation request, Redco Properties LLC. It's located on the northwest corner of Wayne World Drive and Thomas Roads, 30.4 acres. The city council at that meeting on May 15th, 2017, scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of the subject property. If council determines that proposed annexation meets all the requirements of GS 168-58, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. In addition to those requirements, the city adopted a policy which allows annexation of non-contiguous areas subject to a number of requirements. The requirements governing non-contiguous annexation are as follows, A through D. I'm not gonna read those. As indicated in the attached report, the area's proposed annexation meets all the above items. The recommendation would be by motion, adopting an ordinance, annexing Redco Properties LLC, signed effective June the 3rd, 2017.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Rowe? All right. This is a public hearing for Redco Properties, the annexation of Redco Properties. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing now, we'll close this public hearing, and you have a recommendation to adopt the ordinance in front of you.
So move.
Uh, any discussion? All those, everybody raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, Item F.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Item F is a public hearing to consider an incentive grant agreement with Project F. We can now divulge that the name of the company involved is Stormburg Foods. Stormburg Foods has developed plans for the renovation of an existing facility and installation of manufacturing machinery and equipment in Goldsboro, North Carolina. The city council of Goldsboro believes that the location of new industries and the expansion of existing industries is vital to the economic health of Goldsboro and the welfare of its citizens. The city council wishes to encourage such development by means of offering incentives to recruit new industries and aid in the expansion of existing industries. Such incentives, such incentives are predicated on the notion of expanding Goldsboro's tax base and providing additional jobs for Goldsboro citizens that pay wages higher than the current prevailing wage, average hourly wage in that particular industry. The company is expected to hire over 50 employees and pay an additional $8,000 per year in property taxes to the city. Pursuant to North Carolina state law, a public hearing is being held on the pro, on a proposal to provide economic incentives to Stormburg Foods, totaling $26,110, which would be $5,222 a year over a five-year period, based on an incentive agreement that would have an approximately $1,415,000 capital investment in the creation of at least 50 jobs. The recommendation will be following a public hearing, and depending on any comments received, staff would recommend that council consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an economic grant agreement with Stormburg Foods. Would you have Ms. Crystal guess with the development line presence if you had any particular questions in regards to the proposal?
Any questions?
Randy?
All right. If not, this is a public hearing to consider an incentive grant for Stormburg Foods. Would anybody like to speak, for or against?
Good evening, sir. Mayor, City Council. I'd very good always like to take you out with my briefings.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I come before you tonight to ask only that you delay this action for at least two weeks to give the city and the city manager the opportunity to come back to give a little more insight into this company. It was quite some time ago, I remember coming before the city council for APV Baker. I think the mayor was the only one on the council at that time, because they was giving a $150,000 grant to the bakery in matching the county giving to try to keep the bakery here. Well, they took our $150,000, and the counties, and nine months later moved out on the road to Clayton. I'm not saying by all means that this company intends to do that. All I'm saying is that I like to see, when we start getting new companies in Goldsboro and Wayne County, that we try to get a little more information from these companies and try to get a little more information as far as, is company gonna have what's called an equal opportunity employer? What is the corporate culture of the company? What is its workplace diversity like? What is the, are they gonna have a workforce that's reflective of the community? And all, all the jobs that talk about the 60 jobs, or all those low-level jobs, and the supervisors and the managers are coming in with the company. I realize this may be a departure for the way we used to doing business. We so happy to get business sometime in Goldsboro or North Carolina, mostly any county. We just welcome them in and don't ask a whole lot of questions. You're gonna hire people, come on in. But years down the line, we start seeing a company takes on a col, a, 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 a company culture that may not be advantageous to all the citizens of Wayne County and Goldsboro. And since I've been here, I did give you some examples, and I said, Goldsboro already have too many businesses, workplaces, that lack a meaningful, diverse employment staff. And three specific reasons I point out, examples, is a healthcare office that I've observed for 27 years, and never seen a black nurse employed, and it's ongoing. A home improvement store, an observation in 2010, which is not that long ago, that had 102 white males on duty and two black males. A community college observation, that during 1990 to 2005, we had a nursing school that averaged 20 white students and two black. Now, I say that not to be disparaging about our county, but these things do exist. There are several companies in Goldsboro and Wayne County that simply have too many whites employed. But neither you nor me or anyone else, unless they want to get a trip to Cherry, is gonna go up and tell employer, you have too many whites. But what I have done in the past, especially as far as the home improvement, I, I've questioned them to say, have you not been able to find in a county, Wayne County, more than two black males for your employment? And it has changed somewhat. They have quite a few more, but they all on knife, so we still don't get to see that many. But in any event, I, I'd just like to, for us to pause for a minute, give the city manager or whoever's in charge of interviewing new companies, and just start adding a little bit more, instead of just reading in the paper. And I know Randy means well, just coming up and saying what the economic, but just tell us a little bit. This company is from, uh, this company's from South Africa. And I just gave this picture on the back, not to be disparaging, but to show you the culture of that particular, this is, this is an entertainment group that's at a four-star hotel. So, if we went to this city and stayed in a hotel, this was the type of entertainment. Now, normally, we wouldn't expect to see that here in America, and hopefully not in Goldsboro, but that's, that's a part of their culture. And we may need to know a little bit more about companies. And if, if we can find out that they can be an equal opportunity employer and have a workforce that's truly reflection of the community in which they reside in, myself personally, I would be more than willing to give more than $26,000 as an incentive. And I, and I leave you with that, and for you to consider. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? If not, we're gonna close the public hearing, and you have a recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an economic agreement grant for Project Stormburg.
Move. We should, we should go ahead.
Okay. Well, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those, everybody raise your right hand, say aye. Opposed? You got that, Melissa?
Okay.
All right, the motion carries. All right. So, now with that, we're gonna move to public comment period time. Everybody has three minutes if you'd like to speak. And Mr. Sutton, you want to come, or you can come first, and you have three minutes. This is the public comment period.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank y'all for putting that sign down there by my building. I appreciate that. But we need a sign up there that says, "Watch for pedestrian crossing", like you have right out in front of here. We need one of those too. But I do want to thank you for putting that sign up.
Well, last time, I'm sorry, I, I heard you mention the yellow sign. I didn't catch the pedestrian crossing sign, so I guess we got more work to do.
Well, how much will it cost to put one of those up?
It doesn't matter what it costs, ma'am. We, I just didn't catch that. But we'll work on it, okay? We, we, we tried to hear what you said. We understand people congregate, and we're trying to make that better. I know Councilmember Williams has worked on it. I've worked on it, and we're trying to help you.
And he has done a good job. He has done a fantastic job. He's kept me from blowing my lid.
We don't want you to blow your lid. He did a, if he did that, he did a fine job.
You're really dumb.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
I couldn't tell you my nickname, but I don't think it would go over too well.
All right. We're good. Thank you. We'll look at, we'll look into the sign.
Too more than look into.
Okay.
I want to see one up there.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm trying.
Mr. Sutton?
I don't even know if I can sleep like that before, anyway. I made it. Oh. The reason I said what I said was, uh, I was up here a while back, and this is not money as much as it is principal. This all started in December 2016. It's really pathetic. Anyway, and it's a, it's a responsibility, the city's responsibility. I guess that every yard in this, in Goldsboro has a sewer tap. And the sewer taps owned by the city. Sewer taps supposed to be cleaned periodically. They tell me once a year. I don't know. We've had that sewer tap now for, what, 37 years since we started in 1980? Never been cleaned out in 37 years. And then all of a sudden, my wife's building is flooded with water for the washing machine and the baby, et cetera. And, um, we spent money to have the pipes cleaned out, checked, camera put in it, in the pipes and whatever, but anyway, the sewer pipes. And couldn't find anything. And then someone came out there, in fact, several people came out there. And, um, first ones came out there, walked up and down the place out there, up and down the street, trying to find water running. They couldn't find any water running. I don't know what they had to do with sewer tap, but anyway. Then the next one came out there, and I had to leave, and about an hour, I came back, and there it was, sewer tap. I hadn't, I'd never seen it. Been out there since, um, 1980. And, uh, sticking up out of the ground. And, um, anyway, it was cleaned out, and that solved the problem. But it looks like to me that there's negligence on the city's part here. And I know you can't take care of everything, and, and, but it is something like liability, as far as I'm concerned. And the reason I mentioned this up here, the 1947, is I, I have been around a long time, and I've never seen anything like this before. I, I, I've never seen a city council who didn't have any feelings, any more feelings than maybe some of you do, for other people. I read about it in the paper. It's very evident in the paper that the feelings are lacking as far as passion, compassion for your fellow citizenry, and as far as helping them out. And of course, the reason that I'm up here, uh, or living up here, is because our house got flooded in October of last year. We're living in a, we've been very blessed with FEMA put us a trailer up here. We're living in the back of a parking lot. And that's where this all got started. And, uh, we've been living there since December of last year. And we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to, to live up here. But, um, I saw where, I think it was about $487 that y'all voted yourself for, health insurance, $500 a month, $6,000 a year. And Steve's over here makes, Lord knows how much, a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand a year. Friends' benefits and all that, but, okay. Don't use added in a sentence. That's not good English.
I'm just gonna point.
But I can't understand this. I really can't. Like I say, this is, this is not money. I don't have to have this $135. But nobody has called me. Nobody has written me a letter, nothing. I haven't heard the first word from anybody since I was up here. And don't you think that's what they call respect, lack of respect? I, I think it is.
Thank you, sir.
And I think, maybe y'all can improve on that. But I would like to know why, because there's no respect in this letter either. Says C.V. Sutton instead of Mr. Sutton. It says, "Dear C.V. Sutton" instead of "Dear Mr. Sutton", you've got an insurance company that doesn't even have respect. So, I guess it goes with the course. You, you don't respect people, and you hire insurance companies that don't respect people. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Would anybody else like to speak during the public comment period? Come on up, Miss Sutton. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My problem has not gone away from Bosco Beach. They're still riding all night long. Now, what are y'all gonna do? Okay. I hate to say, "I told you so", but I begged them not to take that part into the ETJ before. They didn't listen. Now, y'all won't, y'all see you got a mess on your hands. But that's in the past. Okay. The lawyer from the sheriff says he will enforce the general statute. The letter that Mr. Rowe sent to Mr. Pierce said they were trespassing on county and city property. So, what are y'all gonna do to enforce that trespassing thing? Mr. Pierce said he'd be more than happy evidently to take care of that problem. So, that's how you can get rid of that problem, uh, them trespassing on y'all's land? Their parking trailers aren't making a fortune? Now, if anybody's gonna make money off the FEMA land, it needs to be the county and the city. Right? Now, let's stop it. There's your answer right there. Okay? This little map here shows you how much y'all have got, right in here.
Yes, ma'am.
Those right there, that's how much Bosco's got.
Right.
They got no reason whatsoever to be on your property when they got all these. Do you think I have? You can share that one.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
And another little quickie. Who does inspecting of the county, uh, FEMA land every three years and sends a report to Raleigh?
The county?
It's supposed to be the city and the county.
I, I can't answer that. I can get you an answer, but I don't know the answer.
Well, evidently, y'all ain't been doing it, 'cause when I talked to Mr. Chris Cruz, he didn't, couldn't tell me who was doing it, and it didn't sound like he'd been getting any reports. You might want to look into that.
And he's with who? With FEMA?
He's with FEMA.
With, with?
You need his phone number, just call the house, and I'll give it to you. Uh, you want, might want to look. You want, might want to look at the fact that trailers down at Bosco Beach appear to be round the clock year, and according to the little deficiency that was written up, they can only be there no longer than 180 days. Might want to look at that. I'll bring you some more things next time.
You have a great week, Ms. Stanley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and move on to our next. We have the consent agenda.
Oh, he's coming up.
No, he's not.
Public comments?
We just closed the public comment.
I understand, Mr. there, you had your head down and talking to the people. Ask the people how many people see you standing there.
Go ahead, you have 3 minutes.
I so appreciate the mayor and the city council here to speak on this occasion, but nevertheless, I think I bring up things that need to be brought up. Good evening, my name is Charles Wright, and I'm coming to address in 3 minutes that I strongly recommend the council delay its vote for the approval of 642,500 with Daniels and Daniels Construction for the 2,500 square foot addition to Seymour Johnson Airport's Sports Center. In review of the notes that we got and the thousands of pieces of information as a result of the Freedom of Information back a year ago, we discovered that Mr. Guthrie did reach out to Daniels and Daniels in December of 2013 and got a consultation on the very project that Daniels and Daniels has now been awarded. I have several concerns about that action regarding this contract, such as unfair competitive advantage, organizational, personal conflicts of interest, unequal access to information, biased ground rules, and unusual favoritism to a particular contract. If the attorney sees that some of this language seems familiar, it's from some federal statutes that guidelines what, what determines organizational and personal contracts, personal conflicts of interest when it comes to contracts. So therefore, I'm reaching out to appropriate investigative state and federal agencies to determine if any illegal actions, conflicts of interest, inappropriate business ethics occur between the city of Goldsboro and the contractor, Daniels and Daniels Construction, as they was awarded this contract to build this addition to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base on a competitive bid basis, while they was allowed to give consultation in 2013, which is, I believe, in violation of several statutes. I would ask that the council put off reviewing and approving this action until, until such time investigative, such time investigative reports are received by this city council and executive staff. And I'd just like to close by saying I also have concerns concerning the actual cost of the addition. As you can see, there was a verbal Essex for the building addition was 300 to 375, yet the written shows 600,000. The perimeter fence estimate was for 367, 390,000, yet written documents show 615,000. I invite you to look through this packet at your convenience, especially the packet number 3 with the 5 pages. It's very interesting reading. As always, I'd like to ask the city council, do they have any comments or questions? Or should I expect to read any comments or questions in the news articles in the upcoming days?
Thank you, sir.
If not, I thank you.
All right, now we're gonna close the public comment period. I'm sorry about that. So now you have the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda consists of items G through N. Again, your consent agenda items that we have discussed were G through N.
Any questions from? If not, we need a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items G through N.
Is there a second? Well, we need a roll call, look. Yes, ma'am. You said G through N? No, ma'am.
Councilor Williams?
No.
Councilor Daltonway?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Ham?
Yes.
Councilmember Acock?
Consent agenda is approved. Items requiring the individual action, we have none. City manager report?
None this evening, ma'am.
City attorney?
No reports, ma'am.
Uh, council, mayor, councilman report. So we'll start with Mr. Acock.
No reports.
Sam?
None.
Scottson?
No comment.
Mr. Steele?
I just wanted, I just wanted to say thank you to the chamber and county officials for coming out last week in my attempts to bring technology jobs to Goldsboro and Wayne County. I, I find it very funny and kinda disheartening at the same time that we still fight over things that should be very apparent and should be going on in our nation and, and in our world right now, and that's, we are all equal, and we should not be fighting over what we should be putting in place, that we have to have this, or we have to have that. It should be very apparent that it doesn't matter what race, color, creed you are, if you have the aptitude and education, then you should be able to facilitate getting a My attempts were, and what are still my attempts, and will continue, always be, as African-American that was raised by older African-Americans, and some that are passed away and gone on to the next world, is that we were a people of ambition, and that it didn't matter what we had, that we took every dime, every cent, and that's how we obtained land, and we put ourselves into working as hard as we could to have something, and that we're not gonna throw the card out, that we're, oh, so poor us, we can't, we're gonna fight for everything that we get. So as myself and anybody that's with me, whether they're black, white, or Hispanic, or whatever your cultural difference may be, that if you truly want something, you will be with me and will help me fight to bring the future in technology jobs to Goldsboro and Wayne County, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dalton?
No comment.
Mr. Williams?
No comment.
All right, we stay adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.